On Georgiana by people who are southbound and get stuck on Georgiana because there's no place to go. So, closing St. Vincent actually creates a traffic flow issue that I'm not sure that people have recognized. And I believe that when the apartments are full, the houses are built, we actually need that street open for good traffic flow as opposed to a fourth park, outdoor space in Eddie Street Commons, the traffic flow is more important.
Will you be here for the regular meeting to speak on behalf of this?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much. In the essence of time, we're trying to move along for our regular council meeting. I appreciate that.
Councilwoman Niskowski, can I ask one question of the presenter?
If you could, we can do that later this afternoon or in the meeting.
I want to make a motion.
Go ahead with the motion, please.
That we send this bill to the full council with no recommendation, I mean, with no That just allows us to have more deliberation at the seven o'clock meeting since we're trying to move forward.
Troy Warner seconds that motion.
We have a second?
Troy did.
Okay. Could we take the roll, please?
Sorry, I didn't have my mic on, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Niskowski? Yes, or I, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mr. La Trail? Mr. La Trail?
Hi.
Okay, bye-byes.
Okay, that, the motion has been carried with no recommendation to, for the regular meeting.
Thank you.
All right, this meeting, thank you.
Can we unshare the, yeah, unshare the document?
Yes, I'm sorry, I will do that right now.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay, we'll go ahead.
Never mind, never mind, I got it. I just had to, I don't know what happened, but yeah, the first few times I was trying, it wasn't working. All right.
Okay, we all ready? Ms. Jones, your group, ready?
Yep, we're ready.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Tuesday. If I could have the clerk's office mute everybody, please.
Okay.
Good evening, the Tuesday, May 26, 2020, common council meeting is in order again. And what we're doing right now is a virtual common council meeting with public input. We want to thank everybody who's joining us. The link at the top of this agenda can direct you to the page. We will turn to invocation as Pastor Kenneth Lee from Kingdom Christian Center on with us.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, for doing the invocation. Go ahead.
Thank you. With you, bow your heads with me, Father God, we ask today, as we get ready to go into this council meeting, that first of all, Lord, we thank you for watching over everyone and watching over our city. We ask, God, that you would allow our council members to vote in ways that will make South Bend a better place. We pray, God, for unity. We pray, God, that the agenda is the people. We even lift up our city right now and the homeless population and the decisions that will be made. We ask, God, that you would look on our mayor, our police chief, all of our elected officials, and allow them to represent the people. We pray, God, for peace in our city. We ask that you would watch over families and young people, that violence will be deterred and that it will go down. We ask, God, that you would just help our city come together as they have been working together during this pandemic. We pray, God, that you will strengthen South Bend and make South Bend a blessed place to live. And we ask, God, that you would just allow the leadership to make decisions that will positively affect all, all these things we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Lee, so much for that. Ms. Jones, would you please do roll call?
Yes, I forgot to mention, can I read the instructions for the public to speak?
Sure.
Okay. Members of the public, for audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so are in the chat. We ask that you provide your name, address, and those are required for all the speakers at in-person council meetings. Also, for citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert the following into the chat, and the council president will call on you during the relevant time for public input. Again, enter your name and your address, and you will be given three minutes to speak. So, please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remark. Now, I will do roll call. Councilmember Davis?
Henry's here.
Councilmember McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Warner?
Here.
Councilmember Tejka?
Here.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Present.
Councilmember Tom Boss Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
Vice President White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Is there a sub, report on subcommittee minutes, please?
Yeah. To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of March 23, 2020, April 13, 2020, April 27, 2020, May 11, 2020, beginnings of the council, and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the report from the subcommittee on all the minutes that have been identified.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tejka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tom Boss Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Now, we'll turn to special business at this time. Mayor James Mueller will give us an update on city-related issues as well as anything on COVID. I believe the main concern from this common council has been the homeless tent city. Mr. Mayor, are you there?
I am. Good evening, council members. Thank you, President Scott.
Good evening.
So, I'll just briefly give the update on COVID-19 since we've gone over a lot of where we are the last couple of meetings. But, as you know, we entered into Phase Three of the governor's back-on-track plan over the weekend, and for the most part, we're in Phase Three. There are some, had been some delays on different pieces, and that included increasing gatherings to a size up to 100 people. At the same time, we do see some level of uptick in the number of cases in St. Joseph County and the state. And so, we, the health officials are keeping a watchful eye to see if they might come in and make restrictions on gatherings or other above and beyond what the governor is doing. So, that's, we will know within the next two or three weeks how, which direction this is going to take. These are a critical few weeks here where, you know, we could be going back up in ascent and hopefully not, but we'll know, we'll know how this opening is going in relative short, short order. So, that's, that's where we are, and we continue to work with our health officials and Unified Command and our partners in the county to increase testing, contact tracing, and the pieces that are going to help us contain further outbreaks without having to resort to stay-at-home or more extreme separation or isolation measures. I know the, the issue of our chronic homeless population has become front and center, especially today, but I did want to give briefly some, some level of history here. I know the returning council members are well-versed and aware of where we're, where we're, have come from and where we had been going and, but certainly, this is a new council and a new administration, so we need to make sure that we agree on the strategy going forward, and I don't think we're going to necessarily solve that tonight by any means, but given some of the urgency to the issue now as well as into the future, want to give as much context as possible as we consider the path forward. So, I guess the start is, South Bend is a, does receive federal HUD funds every year, and as we go through the budget process, you know, you'll, we'll see more of that. And in particular, there is an annual emergency solutions grant, which is federal funding, and it funds five shelters, Center for the Homeless, Youth Service Bureau, YWCA, AIDS Ministries, and Life Treatment Center. It doesn't fund the whole bit, they get other federal funding outside of this amount as well as fundraising and other funding sources, but we do direct the funds that we manage as a city toward those, those entities. And then, there are three agencies from that grant. Shelter can only, only account for a certain percentage of those funds. The remaining percentage has to go to something else, and we use the balance mainly for three agencies for rapid rehousing, and those are similar agencies, YWCA, YSB, and AIDS Ministries. And then, the St. Joseph County Housing Consortium, which includes membership from Mishawaka and the county, and South Bend administers another portion of those federal funds, HUD funds, and some of those are directed toward Oaklawn for tenant-based rental assistance to mentally ill and our homeless populations. But, as you know, a number of years ago, I believe 2016, 2017, was when we, we had our, at least in recent memory, our first start of a type of encampment that happened under the, under the bridge there on Lafayette Street. And the, what came out of this was the report on chronic homelessness from the working group under the previous administration, and the chronic homeless individuals account for a relatively, a small fraction of the total homeless population over the course of the year, but they're the ones that the community is oftentimes most familiar with because, in many cases, they're, they're the most visible to the community. And so, out of, out of that report came suggestion to adopt housing first as the policy for the city, and that was found as best practices across the country. And with the thought that, even though we have leading institutions for what we might call the non-chronically homeless, you know, the Center for the Homeless has received a lot of accolades over the years for what they're able to provide relative to what other cities do, and we, we have a host of other agencies as well that provide services. So, the, so what we're really talking about are these chronically homeless individuals for the most part, and what the housing first principle is about is, there may be a host of issues why there, these individuals are chronically homeless and not able to, not able to take part in the other services, or not able to, to move toward a more stable life with, with shelter. So, the thought is shelter is better than unshelter, and you put housing first. So, get, get these individuals outs, off of crisis mode, off of the streets, and then connect them to the services that they need to, to make progress. And as far as that working group report, there were three main, three main pieces. One was better coordination or coordinated entry point, an intake center, or what was called a gateway at different points over the past few years, a gateway center, in order to get that shelter and connect these individuals to the services they need with the long-term goal of moving them to scattered site permanent supportive housing units across the, the community. So, I mean, we've had a, just go quickly, we know we never were, was it, we never had been able to cite that intake center. There were a number of conversations. We thought we were making progress over the years, but unfortunately, there were issues getting that cited and implemented. We, we have been able to support financially the creation of a coordinated entry position to help work on that process, and we also did work to, to help a consultant process to get us to join the, the balance of state piece. On the permanent supportive housing side, we were able to partner with different, with, I don't know the exact entities' names, but the Corporation for Supportive Housing and their applications, and, and get the, what we know as the Oliver Apartments over there off Indiana Avenue, and that was 32 units. And there was a second project that, that's been under consideration for a number of months, that proposed 22 new permanent supportive housing units and up to 40 scattered site permanent supportive housing units as well as vouchers. We've also separately worked with the Center for the Homeless over the past few years to coordinate different funding sources to, to assist an additional 18 permanent supportive housing clients. The, the Washington Colfax units development can accommodate up to six units of permanent supportive housing. Despite some rumors, I was not involved in that. I was mayor-elect at the time and not in the city, but there, there are rumors that I, I directed that, that project, but that, that piece was not, I don't know all that went into that, but I think where we can get scattered site supportive housing units, I mean, the goal is to decentralize a lot of this and so that there's not any one built-up issue or compounding issues by having, you know, more density in terms of, of these individuals. We're also working with Merchants Supportive Housing Corporation, who have agreed to offer at least five permanent supportive housing units. So, that's all, you know, recent work to try to get some of these long-term solutions moving and get more permanent shelter options for, for our, our unsheltered population. At the same time, with the city entered into arrangements that, again, were unprecedented with the formation of the CRAS building over there by Hope Ministries as a weather amnesty site, and before that, the city was not directly involved with, with working to find weather amnesty solutions the following year. So, one of the, one of the issues, same as the gateway center, citing even weather amnesty is always difficult. People say, we need it, but then, you know, when we get the, starting to work on solutions, there are a lot of people who say, well, we don't want it here. And so, what we're able to do is get temporary fixes where we say one to two years, and so, the CRAS building had that condition on it where it was a one-to-two-year solution. I believe we used it for two years, about two winters. The year before this winter, this past winter, there was the, the option over there at Touch Street where Hope operated weather amnesty. And then, this past winter, the Salvation Army Building over on South Main Street was, was a weather amnesty, along with Center for the Homeless opens up parts of their facilities for, for weather amnesty as well. The other new thing last winter was the partnership with Our Lady of the Road for a day center, and that was with the thought of it's cold during the day, and, and there are conditions where, where unsheltered individuals need, need a place to go during the day during weather amnesty. And the city also coordinated weather amnesty gifts, donations through Transpo and Library to get bus passes, and there was some direct city financial support for those efforts, too. So, all of these things that have been going on in the past few years did not happen prior to that. And so, there's been, this is just the context of the, you know, enormous amount of efforts that are going on to try to find solution, identify and facilitate and implement solutions. So, then, when we entered into the COVID-19, the health officials came to us and, and the best practices was to, to generate individual rooms to isolate those who are suspected to be infected or waiting test results, or those who are, do not need medical assistance or direct medical assistance at a medical facility, but don't have a place to isolate and recover on their own. And so, we, we scoured the, the entire counties, talked to countless people, and we ended up with only one willing property owner in a hotel up in, in Roseland that was willing to, to work with us on this, and we've been working with that site, and it's taken, honestly, that's taken a lot of bandwidth of our, of our existing staff time that we haven't been able to allocate to other purposes. We think it's important to make sure that we keep these, these individuals safe and our community safe from overloading our healthcare systems during, to meet this crisis, but it's not, that's not something we can do long-term or, or if there needs to be an extension past this, this first period of the coronavirus crisis. The health officials are working to, you know, we know testing has been an issue across the board, but they are working to test our, our homeless populations, and they tested those in shelters and are working to test the unsheltered individuals. They, they were not, they did not see it as a feasible option to test the individuals at the encampment site, and they plan to test the, the unsheltered individuals at, during the Hope meal services in, in the coming days. So, and moving quickly to the, the encampment is, the health officials a couple of weeks ago did warn us about bringing groups together at a site. You know, obviously, we all know the physical distancing is important to prevent the spread of the coronavirus, and they did at that time warn about, you know, creating an environment where people would congregate and potentially spread the virus among the, the community. The city did not encourage, but did allow the private property owner to, to host what started out as a very small encampment, but the, that site grew rapidly and the number of health and safety issues increased. And when the, that property owner decided that it had grown beyond what he ever imagined, then he, he, he sought them to vacate his property, and they moved across the street to a city-owned lot. And we did not want to turn that around immediately. We gave, the city gave ample notice over 72 hours, noticed that, that this was not a permanent resting spot for a number of reasons. And unfortunately, today, you know, the deadline that was posted was 10:00 a.m. this morning, and, you know, at 10:00 a.m., there were still a number of folks there, and both people who are experiencing homelessness as well as a number of advocates on behalf of those individuals. I'm proud of the men and women in code and police for how they took on this difficult task today. That was not an easy environment to go into, but for the most part, it went as smooth as we might have hoped, or we all, we of course would have hoped for a smoother transition, but, you know, all things considered and where it could have gone, it, it was relatively smooth. So, going forward, we maintain, or I maintain, that the housing first is the best practice. I think, you know, we, we can do more research on that, but we're going to find that that is the best practice across the country, and, and trying to get individuals sheltered and stabilized is better than, than having them remain unsheltered. We continue to prefer partners, our community partners, to, to provide these services over city-run services because we are not best equipped to be these service providers. But, as was mentioned in, in the, in a Tribune article last week, you know, if, we've been talking about a lot of these things for, for years, and if it does take the city to, to take on something more directly, at least in the short run, that's something that I think we should be willing to explore. You know, not necessarily we have to do it that way, but I think we need to, we need to move to, to see, to see results and, and things implemented as quickly as possible. So, in the short term, what I'd be proposing is opening up a nighttime amnesty shelter as quickly as possible, using additional funds from HUD that are coming from the CARES Act that we expect, I don't know exactly what timetable we expect, but soon, so hopefully the, the next couple of weeks. And then, run the weather amnesty at the same site this winter while we work on long-term solutions. So, we know that, similar to when we started with the CRAS building over by Hope, early on, the first time we did weather amnesty, or we facilitated weather amnesty as a city, we knew that was a short-term solution. We know when we were selling the Salvation Army Building for last year's weather amnesty, it was a short-term solution, but we, we hope we can still utilize this for one more winter because the reality of it is, if it's not going to be that site, we're, it's already, it's coming up on June, and it's an enormous process to find, identify, and, and get a site up and running in time for, for the cold weather as early as October. And so, if it's not, if, if, if the community feels strongly that it's not the site for this winter, we really need to start scrambling ASAP to, to identify an alternative. So, I would hope that at least in the short term, this can remain a resource to, to provide weather amnesty this winter and potentially even provide amnesty before that. So, that's, that's going on the short, short term. In terms of the long term, if, if this council does support the housing first approach and strategy, we'd be looking to strengthen that coordinated entry system and continue to expand the number of permanent supportive housing units for the chronic, for the chronic homeless individuals. We'll continue to seek more regional partners because we do know that this is not, South Bend hosts a lot of the services for homeless in our area, but it is a regional issue and certainly need to, to engage more regional partners. And the other piece is that some people have suggested, and this is up for discussion, is, is trying to decentralize the provision of existing services so that no one area or neighborhood has to bear the, the full brunt of our region's issues. And so, that's something we heard when we were trying to cite the, the gateway or the intake center where the southeast neighborhood said, well, we have all these services, is there any way that, you know, you could find it somewhere else? But then, the challenge is, the people are going to gravitate toward where the services are. So, so unless there is a way to decentralize it somewhat, we're always going to have this, this challenge. So, whether we, whether we adopt housing first or not, if this, if many of the services remain in the area, chronically homeless individuals are going to remain in the area whether they're sheltered or not. And so, that's, that's just the reality of it, and certainly, we can also, on the same token, we can create all of these additional units for permanent supportive housing, and even though that's a low-barrier housing first model, there are individuals who are, who are- there are individuals who are out right now, who were evicted from that because they got evicted from the process because they didn't follow the process. So there are challenges. There's no easy solution and hopefully we can come together as a council and a community and figure out what our long-term solutions here will be. So with that, I'll turn it over to any questions you have.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one of my concerns, and I think there are concerns within this council, is hearing the fact that we read about in the newspaper about the the weather amnesty over the wintertime. I think that is kind of a concern that I've had also. As you know, my voice to the media that we need to start those, that task force again, the homelessness task force that some of the council members, I know Sharon McBride, Karen White, were both a part of last year, last term before we received a new council. I know talking to a lot of these council members that they're looking for that permanent supportive housing and we really need to work on that. I think some of the biggest issues that we had in the past was it was hurry up, make a decision and this is what we're going to do, which I believe a longer, you know, timing is horrible all the time with this issue. There's always going to be a homeless issue, but we need to work on a long-term solution and bring everybody to the table to work on that. With that said, I also would like to engage council member Troy Warner and Vice President Karen White to probably have a off-night meeting just to talk about what you want to do with Salvation Army building, how that's going to get funded. I appreciate you bringing up the HUD and the CARE funding. But what does that look like? What are, you know, the liabilities to the city? What's also, what are we going to do with security, that type of thing? So there's a lot of questions. I know we're not going to get through it all tonight. I would like to, if you want to make a comment on that, and then I think we go down the line, a couple of questions to the mayor and then we move on with our council meeting. Is that fair, Mayor?
Sure, sounds good.
Okay, any comment to what I've said and then we'll move down the line?
Yeah, I mean, just, it would be great to have, I mean, this is something where it's not a sustainable solution for us to be scrambling at the last minute every couple of years to find a site. And honestly, we're running, you know, we do this, we've done this exercise now two to four times and, you know, we're running out of obvious solutions, even if we can pull it off. You know, we do need to have a more stable, long-term approach that we feel comfortable with because there are no perfect solutions here and there are going to be challenges with whatever path we decide to take, but we just need to make sure that we're on the same page and we stick to the strategy unless we decide there needs to be a shift. But it would be good to have that clarity as best as possible.
Thank you. We'll go down the district row. Mr. Henry Davis, second district.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Mayor, for showing up. I really appreciate it. I have some pointed questions because I am a bit lost. You said a whole lot. I was wanting to interject, but I, you know, wouldn't, I couldn't because you had your spiel, so to speak. But in the next, like a couple of weeks, and this is one question, but let me finish out on the rest of them. You have a decision that you have to make with what goes on with the Motel 6, I think the Motel 6 on 933. Council members didn't really know what was going on. You got $500,000 from us. Then you move right into, you know, spending it up there. As it seems and what it appears to be based upon the news reports, and I can't believe all of them, but they're pretty consistent in saying that things going up there are going wrong. It's not the best-case scenario and we're not doing a very good job of running a homeless shelter as it relates to Motel 6. So I don't understand how we transition from there as a Motel 6 into something that's going to be downtown to help support the homeless when we are doing a less than a good job there on 933 right now. The other question I have and it relates not only to homelessness, but it definitely, the overall health of the city financially. I have some really deep concerns on how we're going to move forward in the coming months and also years, not only because of COVID, but what is happening right now. The health of our city is dependent upon the school corporation, if I remember correctly, if I know that to be true. Right now, we're looking at the school corporation referendum wanting to add a new tax to the taxpayers, no matter how small, how big it is, it's a new tax. And then we look at the induction of that tax, higher assessed values for people in their homes, which equals more, looking at a higher unemployment rate, which says not a lot of money. And then when we travel down spaces such as Bendix, at Bendix Street and you're reducing that down to like two lanes with a middle alternative turn lane, that prohibits more trucks from delivering their product. No one I've talked to, whether they own a business or not, does not like this one-way, this two-way stuff. I don't know why we're prohibiting more businesses from coming inside of town. We have to expand our access. If we don't, then the tax base decreases and then we'll have less money to operate. So that goes back to the original point about us and our health, our financial health of this city. We're not looking forward to expansion, looks like we're decreasing. So how are we going to continue to offer the services, homeless, shelter included, to all of these people who don't have anything when we don't have anything coming in? And so there's a lot more to that discussion, but I would just ask those two right now because I think we're, you know, in a crunch for time right now. But it sounds like and it looks like to me that we're in trouble.
Okay, so I'll answer your first question about the isolation center. We would always, again, the preference would be to have partners operate it, but that was an emergency situation and the team responded, I mean, it's a miracle that in some ways that this got up and running, given that it's hard to identify a willing property owner and get all the different pieces that go into that. There are security personnel on-site that's been contracted. There is site managers, there is food delivery. And so, you know, I mean, we've heard conflicting reports and most of the negative reports are about a misunderstanding of what the site is and isn't. It is not a mandatory quarantine site and so all the individuals there are voluntary. And if they choose to leave the site, that is not something that we can enforce. But those instances have been relatively infrequent, given the number. And we've had a number of guests recover successfully in return back to South Bend. So, I mean, that's, there has also been some positive stories about that. So I would just contest the fact that it hasn't been run well despite there is a concerted effort by, you know, by certain folks up in the general area of the isolation center that just don't like it, just like almost any homeless service that is provided across the community. The neighbors are oftentimes, you know, sometimes there are understanding neighbors and sometimes there are less understanding neighbors. So that's that piece. And in terms of the funding, we do, as mentioned before, we expect to get fully reimbursed from COVID-related funds, so either from the state or federal government. So at the end of the day, that won't be a burden on city funds.
But within that, we're still showing our hand on how we're going to operate as an organization to deliver a service. So we just can't diminish it and say, hey, we're going to get our refund back so we can try it again. Right now, we're not doing a very good job of it. So if we're going to go back to the same type of framework, then what are we going to change up and do? And that's not necessarily hiring new people. I don't know if we want to be in the homeless, the homeless idea of being a homeless center, meaning South Bend, the city of South Bend.
Yeah, no, that's a fair, that's a fair point. We've got to settle on that because when there are gaps in services, there is a lot of, there is a lot of pressure to increase the level of services in our community. So that's something we've got to get on the same page about. And again, I would just, in terms of the Rosen facility, I don't know what specific issues you're referring to or whether it's
The ones that are on the news, sir.
Yeah, what in particular?
News, I don't get anything from you guys. Everything that I get about this situation that's happening is coming from the news. I get the numbers from Sharon because she's good enough, but maybe try to get the numbers as a council. But anything else, we get it from the news, unless I'm missing some emails. So that's the only thing I can
Like I said, those are, some of those are, I mean, in many ways, they're NIMBY, they're more NIMBY complaints than than actual issues with the operation or services provided at the center.
Okay, Mr. Davis, we're going to move on to the next council person. And like I said, this is going to take a special one-night, you know, off-night meeting with committees, I believe. We'll turn to third district, Sharon McBride. Sharon, are you there?
Oh, wow, I've been talking this whole time. I wanted to thank the mayor for his presentation, also to Councilman Davis for his input. And I think it definitely is going to take a lot more discussion for our most vulnerable population. You're definitely, and it's, some of the questions that I know is the liability issues that we'll have to have input from, you know, our attorney. So just want to make sure that whatever undertaking that we are taking, the council, of course, has to answer for whether legally or, you know, to our constituents. So I think making sure that we are in communication with one another, working together towards long-term solutions is paramount. Definitely, we have to sure restructure the entire budget because it's through everybody for, you know, a loop. We already have, the homeless is our most vulnerable population. We also coupled with the disparity study, coupled with COVID-19, coupled with the minority businesses and even the entire economy. So I definitely know that this is going to take a long discussion. We have to talk about funding. We have to talk about what's going to happen when we reach a second peak, even with just the COVID. Are we going to be, are we prepared or how are we going to get prepared when it spike again? So my just, a couple of comments and it's going to just take a long discussion. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Mr. Warner?
Thank you, President Scott. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the update. I appreciate these updates over two weeks. I'm very much looking forward to getting them in person on the fourth floor. I agree, this is kind of an eight-hour, 10-hour discussion. I like the idea of setting up a committee meeting and really getting some more details and figuring out exactly what a plan looks like. Please have your staff reach out to Vice President White and myself and we can, we can get this set up and get the ball rolling. I agree that, you know, a city-operated facility should probably be a last resort. Let's not create the wheel when we have service providers out there. There's a whole lot of funding from the HUD monies. Additionally, the CARES Act funding that you're discussing could go to the third-party service providers to assist them in some kind of housing-first model. Getting these people sheltered as quick as we can get sheltered to them. And then last, I want to thank and commend Chief Ruskowski, the assistant chiefs that were out there today, the officers and the code enforcement staff of their handling of the situation, a very tense and volatile situation. I thought they did a great job of handling things today and we'll move things along. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. What are we up to? Fifth district, Ms. Nagadzki.
Well, fifth district, I think would be me. Yep. And I would just like to to remember Warner's. Yeah, no, thanks. That's all right. Again, everyone, Councilman Warner's comments about beliefs and our, yeah, the job that they did in a very, very tense situation. I wasn't there, but I watched nearly the entire situation via video. And so kudos again to all the city staff and handling that this afternoon. Mayor Mueller, I would like to, first off, a question. And I don't know, I could be misunderstanding this, but it seemed that in the beginning you were talking about the potential funding for a city-run homeless shelter being HUD dollars that we get and currently distribute area service providers. So are we talking about discontinuing that district in favor of taking those dollars and putting them towards, towards a city-run shelter?
So, I mean, that's something to explore in future years, but this year, we are, as part of the CARES Act, in addition to, you know, all the programs people know, the check to every individual, the boost in unemployment insurance, the payment protective program for small businesses. There was also, there was also money set aside for states and cities to respond to the, to COVID-19, as well as there was a number of emergency supplemental appropriations to existing programs, such as emergency shelter grants, CDBG and Home. So for this year, we are expected to receive additional distributions of those funds and those can help other things. There will be more than just what would cover something like that this year. Now, going forward in time, I don't, that's the question for the longer-term solutions is where would we get funding to continue these things? And that's not obvious and that's something that, what is sustainable? What can the city take on over time? And that's something, especially with the concerns about what is our revenue going to look like as we get through the, as we reopen and the economy gets going and how fast do we recover? So there are a lot of questions in terms of long-term sustainability, but we, what I was suggesting right now is just something to get us through this year and then we can reevaluate as we look to a longer-term strategy.
Okay, then thank you for that clarification. I may have misunderstood. I just wanted to make sure that we were talking about the same thing. So I do know what you're talking about. I did receive an email from Pam Meyer on kind of the initial breakdown of what those CARES Act funding might do and what that might look like. But moving forward, obviously, this is going to be a moving forward, this is going to be a, as you indicated, a trickier thing to fund. And, you know, looking at, even before COVID-19 and the shutdowns that have created this, you know, economic crisis and, you know, receipts in Indiana are down, I think a billion dollars in April. Obviously, that affects us as a city. Our income tax receipts will likely be down, property taxes are uncertain, et cetera, et cetera. But even before that, right, we were looking at this But even before that, right, I mean, we were looking at this, uh, 2020 fiscal curve, um, and, and talking about, you know, what is the long-term effect of property tax catch? And, and how do we need to adjust our budget from there? So I do have some real concerns about funding. Uh, I know we can't get into everything tonight. Um, I also have some concerns, um, about, um, the model and, and, you know, if we're talking low barrier or no barrier, right? I think that, um, you know, to expect folks to, um, to get, to give folks a roof over their head without expecting, you know, them to address any kind of root cause for, for the homeless, uh, for the homelessness, given that nearly 75% of unsheltered folks in the United, United States struggle with, um, substance abuse. I think that those are real things to address, um, and what that looks like from a programming standpoint, uh, if the city were trying to take this, and that's, that's a big if, right? I mean, um, as again, Councilman Warner, I think others, uh, suggested that, that, you know, is this even an area where the city should be stepping in as a service provider? Um, so just some, uh, initial thoughts. Um, uh, obviously, this is a, a, a much deeper conversation. Again, uh, I agree that we should have an off-night meeting or multiple off-night meetings to, uh, to discuss. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tashka. Sorry about screwing up your district. So we'll go to the fifth district plus one, which is Sheila Nagatski.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, uh, coming before us tonight and giving us an update. I don't have a lot to add to what most of the, the other council members have stated. Um, I think for the city to be able to initiate, uh, something to help with the, the chronic solutions that we're facing now is a good start. I, I don't believe that it is a best practice for us to, um, be operating a facility like that when so many needs are there, right? Um, the wraparound services, I've had numerous calls today and emails from people in my district, uh, talking about, uh, the downtown area, um, the, uh, that comes with, uh, chronic homelessness is, uh, drug abuse. Uh, some of, uh, my residents and their families bicycling downtown, witnessing some things that he wished his children had not witnessed. Um, so we do know that there is a bigger reach than I think the city should be getting involved with. But I think to partner, to get a start there, uh, to get some partnerships developing to help address it, which will, that definitely more than just what we're all stating tonight needs to be addressed. So I think, um, moving forward, uh, having more meetings, trying to get like minds, uh, together and figure out what is the next steps. But, um, I guess I don't have much more to add than what's already been said. So I don't want to take up, uh, any more time than is needed. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nag, Ms. Nagatski, um, Ms. Lori Hammond.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller, for coming before us today. Just a couple of things, and I don't, um, been trying to control my reactions here. The notion that this was not expected or that we shouldn't have expected this at this time is pretty disheartening for me. I met with you, sir, in your office in February, and I asked you if we could please put that task force back together, that it was critical that we get moving on the homeless issues in the city. And that was early February. I reached out to Pam Meyer in April, talking to her about my concerns about closing the weather amnesty during the COVID pandemic, asking if we could find ways to please keep that open so that we did not have a situation downtown like we saw today. I never heard back from you, sir. I never heard back from Pam. I assumed you had someone working on these issues since I was not being brought into the conversation. You mentioned in your opening that you have a coordinator for homeless services. I wonder if I could get their name and their hire date to know who that person is? Because I've been on all of the monthly homeless, um, community meetings and they are not aware of this coordinator. So I'm wondering who that is?
Sure, we can get, we, that's not, it's not a city employee, but we can get you the information.
Okay, and then my last, um, statement, also not really a question, but, um, there were, there was a lot of talk about being a peaceful transition from the tent city, um, lot in the downtown and a 72-hour termination without a reasonable alternative for these people, sir, is not a peaceful transition. I wish we could have found a better solution, something better planned, and something that gave these people some alternatives. Right now, they have none. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Turn to Councilmember Rachel Tomas Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being with us tonight and for your regular updates. And, uh, appreciate some clarifications on, um, the scenario, the scenario that you're proposing, at least in the short term. I, um, uh, my single question is, is merely this. Have you been able to speak with our key partner providers, um, uh, agency providers? And what, um, what are their thoughts on the short-term solution that, that you just described to us?
Sure, we, we've been in conversations and they're not, uh, they're not necessarily opposed. Just the, uh, you know, they, we need to get more details and figure out how it would be implemented. I, I will say that, uh, toward the end of weather amnesty, Hope was the one who, who was our partner operating weather amnesty this year and in previous years. And they were having a hard time, um, maintaining that through the end. And, and I will say this year, we, we had to go longer than usual and it was good because we had, uh, an especially cold April. But they, um, even if we had, had budgeted and planned for an amnesty shelter past, uh, past April, um, it's not clear how they would have been able to, to keep that going, at least during that time. So there, there are a lot of challenges in terms of what, um, just the capacity to, to provide these services. And, and we'll keep talking with providers, but that is why I, I did mention last week that maybe if someone needs to step up, the city will have to step up if, if we need to figure it out. And, but in, in terms of our team, we don't have, uh, you know, we don't have a staff that's, uh, a giant staff that's working on, on these services. Uh, and, and a lot of the resources toward these types of programming were, uh, I mean, basically, I, I mean, the, the council member Hammond mentioned Pam Meyer. I mean, she's, she's basically running the isolation center up in, it takes, it's taken an enormous amount of time to manage that on top of some of the, the resistance we've received, um, from the town and managing that. And they've put on a lot of different, uh, different pieces, uh, for us to, to navigate through. So, um, there, there is also trade-offs in terms of, of staff time, not just, you know, not necessarily just the, the direct dollars in a sense, but also, um, you know, what, what staff time is, is working on. And so, um, yeah, I mean, I just, I don't know if that answers your question fully, but happy to follow up.
Mayor, I'm just glad that you're, um, communicating and, um, uh, working, uh, uh, working with our key partners on this and moving forward, um, that those same players are at the table. Um, so appreciate knowing that and getting clarity on that. Um, I just finally want to say that I share similar concerns that have already been voiced about, um, funding ongoing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President White.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for coming before the council and sharing information, not only regards to COVID-19, but the situation with our, um, most vulnerable population, and that's the homeless. Uh, I agree, uh, one thing about being the last person, a lot of things that you would state have already been stated. But I believe it's very critical that we start having conversations in regards to, um, a how, a housing issue. Uh, we have a lack of affordable housing, safe housing for a large percentage of our residents. That includes the homeless. I know at this point, that is a top priority. Uh, I think it's important that, um, everyone is at the table, especially the council, uh, members as well. It's very disheartening to open up the Tribune and to find out about what is being discussed or what's being planned. And we're not in a position, I can only speak for myself, to respond to the media because the first time I'm learning of any recommendations have been through the South Bend Tribune. I would encourage that, uh, we would start the conversations. It would be very helpful to, uh, get from you some of those strategies that you're saying that we must, uh, come, uh, come in agreement with and any plans so that we have understanding what the administration is thinking, what that looks like, uh, implementation. I know we have a short-term issue before us, but as we look at it from a long-term perspective, this is a comprehensive planning that has to include, uh, our stakeholders, the council and others that we can come out of this process so we're not planning as we go. Um, reconvening, uh, task force, I think would be very critical. But as Council President has indicated, we can first start out with, uh, the various committees that we can still have the conversations with. I would, uh, want to have information from you and the administration. What are those strategies that you may mention, uh, that we must come into agreement with? Those plans so that we are really operating from the same page? And that could come, you know, forward down the, the line. But I do appreciate you coming before the council. I understand that this is a very, uh, tough, um, conversation and decisions that we have to make. But we want to make sure that all of our citizens, including the homeless, that they're safe and that they have healthy shelter as we move forward as a city.
Thank you. And it's never my, uh, I did not intend to ever catch you off-guard in terms of things appearing in the, in the media. That certainly was, uh, a comment that maybe the city needs to step up, um, was just, we've been working on these issues for a number of years and, you know, some things have moved forward. Some things have stalled and, uh, just was talking about possibilities. We, we, I certainly didn't have a, a detailed plan, uh, working on that and, and ready to go. That's kind of what we're, we're looking at right now. But, um, it wasn't, it was, didn't mean to catch anyone by surprise or, or, or say that there was something moving forward that obviously, uh, whenever we're looking to find funds outside the budget, um, the council is, uh, is, is the holder of the purse, as, as they say. So we would never take that for granted and certainly want to work with you on, on figuring out what is the, the right use of our resources going forward.
I appreciate that and we want to be more than just the holder of the purse. Uh, we need to be part of the planning process because, uh, our citizens, they are reaching out to the various council members and they expect that we have some of the answers. And so I think that as we look at this planning process, it should include not only from a financial perspective, but also in terms of policy, uh, development as well and the implementation of that as it pertains to our role as a council moving forward.
Definitely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President White. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Um, this council, uh, you can say at least, uh, is very concerned. And, um, as Vice President White said and many others, um, you know, you have nine representatives and, and part of our job is not only, uh, keeper of the purse, but also we represent those people and we hear in intimate detail a lot of things that can, um, help, uh, improve the city and, and on this topic as well. So, uh, we certainly want to work together. So, um, one, we're making that decision on the budget and the, the finances to this, that we're all, uh, coordinated and, and working together on this. And I, by no means, I don't think any council member is going to steer this administration the wrong. Way. They all have, they all have, um, they all have information coming from the various neighborhoods in various parts of the city. So, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. We will look forward to coordinating some, uh, off, uh, council night meetings and continue this topic.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, that pretty much was our report from city offices. Uh, with that, I'll. Get a motion to rise and join.
So move. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka.
Aye.
Councilmember Nagatski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember David.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. You're in charge.
Ms. McBride, you're on mute.
Thank you so much. I would like to call the committee of the school and now in question, this portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with the public that the bills that would be given a second reading in public hearing have been given a first reading and set for committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. Now, will you please give bill number 1920 a second reading?
1920, public hearing on an ordinance to vacate the following described property. East end of St. Vincent, east of Eddie Street from the western boundaries of lots six and seven of Eddie Street Common Section Two, two western boundary of the right-of-way of Georgiana Street, South Bend, Indiana. Thank you.
Um, yes, committee, uh, met on bill number 1920 and other the committees of favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have a position present?
Yes, this is Tony Halsey with Kite Realty Group, 30 South Meridian Street, Indianapolis, Indiana.
Mr. Halsey, this is Graham from the clerk's office. If I may, before you proceed, just as a clarification for all intents and purposes, there was, uh, found to be some sort of scriminers error in the committee. Um, the titles of the bill were just, uh, foot-flopped. Um, both have been legally published and advertised, um, in accordance with the proper legislation, uh, that's assigned to the proper bill number. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Halsey, for pointing that out and I, I yield my time to you.
Which one are we discussing?
Uh, because, my, that was primarily for committee. What I meant to say is, uh, that 1920 is, uh, in fact, uh, in reference to, uh, Vincent Street and 2020 is the Corby Boulevard. So I just wanted to clarify.
I'm sorry. So did this go forward with no recommendation or favorable?
This one was the favorable recommendation.
St. Vincent Street, I, I think, I think St. Vincent Street had no recommendation. I'm sorry.
Yes, you're correct, Mr. Halsey.
This was no recommendation.
Right. This was the one that, uh, we ran out of time on.
Yeah.
But the way they're listed in 1920 and 2020 in the formal packet is correct.
Yes, yes, Mr. President. Uh, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. So, um, I will, I will share my screen, um, for anyone that would like to see. If I can find. Okay. So this is uh this is Bill 19 dash 20 uh vacating the eastern uh end of St. Vincent Street. This is a continuation of uh of uh plans that were approved as part of Eddie Street Commons Phase Two. Uh, we vacated several rights of way in uh in uh 2017, as highlighted on in blue on the uh on the drawing that I have pulled up. At the time, um owing to, we needed uh some, we needed to open uh the apartment buildings on the east eastern side of Eddie Street uh for the 2019 uh school year, uh Notre Dame school year. Um, we have, we had plans, uh we have plans to vacate the eastern end of uh St. Vincent Street to uh create a park um city sitting area and things for uh for any residents in the area. We did not proceed forward with the vacation in 2017 along with the rest of the vacations because during uh construction of Eddie Street Commons Phase Two, uh we needed to close uh South Bay Street from Napoleon Boulevard uh to Howard Street. So in order to adequately open the buildings uh B and D on the on the attached drawing, um the only uh access while Eddie Street is closed needed to be um from Georgiana Street to St. Vincent so they could uh so residents could access the parking lots to the east of of those two buildings. Um, staff reviewed our plans in 2017, 2018, um agreed um to the concept of what we would like of what we wanted to do and requested that we continue forward with vacation at such time that we're able to reopen Eddie Street so that the apartment buildings east, I'm sorry, it's at such time that we reopen Eddie Street so that the apartments that are east of Eddie could uh have access through Eddie Street. We're now wrapping up construction on Phase Two, and uh Eddie Street will soon reopen, so this is why we're uh moving forward with the vacation request at this time.
Okay, um, thank you so much, council members. Do you have any questions for the petitioner?
I do. Councilwoman Hammond.
Okay.
I'm wondering if a traffic flow study had been done to see if there would be adverse traffic issues in this area by closing off this street?
We um, there were some traffic studies undertaken by the city in 2016, 27 in regards to Eddie Street Commons as a whole. I regret, I don't recall if it included uh the eastern side of St. Vincent Street being closed or not. I do know they looked at a lot of the other intersections. Um, I also know that we we met with uh the neighborhoods in the area uh on multiple occasions, received feedback um that the majority of the neighbors in the triangle did not want to see traffic from Eddie Street Commons flowing through their neighborhood. Uh, this was part of the solution to that, uh to uh create a park area. We presented that to the residents in October of 2017, and kind of they they we got positive feedback, and we are proceeding forward with that commitment at at this time. It also went through engineering department from the city and Board of Public Works.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, uh, this is uh Councilwoman White. In terms of the park, I know that the park will be owned by Notre Dame, correctly, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and then that will, what type of park are are they looking at in regards to, you know, what that site may, you know, end up being?
Uh, there will be some um stone benches for cities, some trees and uh like catenary lights for for ambient lighting, just a gathering gathering place.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the council?
Um, yes, I do have one question, if I may. Yeah. Uh, when you talked about um, you said in October 2017 is when you met with residents, what has the dialogue been uh currently, say, within the last six months to a year? Has there been dialogue and with them, and have they welcomed uh the green space?
I have had dialogue uh with the I with the residents in the triangle um throughout the throughout the construction of um of Phase Two on various topics. And I've I've gotten positive feedback. I've I've heard Nick, uh, you know, Leanne McLaughlin, who was on here earlier, maybe questioned the need to close uh Street St. Vincent. I've only received, that's the only negative feedback that I have personally received. I believe Tim Sexton of Notre Dame's Office of Public Affairs is uh on all here, and perhaps he could say if he has received other feedback from other residents in the in the triangle.
Chair, I have a question.
President.
Um, you know, regarding the concern of Mrs. McLaughlin, um, I think also what probably working with the city or or you guys that we have signs that says street not through, I think um over time and habit that would cut down on some of the the concerns of uh people cutting through on on St. Vincent's, um, does that make sense?
It does make sense. I'm certainly, we I'm certainly would be happy to put up signs like that um just from what Leanne said earlier. Um, I don't know if she, I'm sure she would like to speak um now at the full meeting, but she is correct that we have had uh the east that leg of St. Vincent Street open on and off throughout construction um as we've needed to uh close different sections of Eddie Street at different times. So, so we have clo- opened and closed it. So I I think part of the issue with the U-turns that she maybe have experienced is that uh the residents of uh the eastern apartment building are have become accustomed to driving down Georgiana Street access in the parking lots through St. Vincent Street. And then, you know, we close because we need to, you know, work in that area, and um and they they're just not accustomed to doing it. I think once the the, once it's fully closed and 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 people are accustomed to that, they're they're gonna know to go down Eddie Street and access St. Vincent that way. But a sign is certainly a good idea.
Chair, I've got a comment and a question. Mr. Halsey, this is Troy Warner. Uh, I I myself have kind of uh as you said, parts of Eddie Street have been opened and closed, and parts of St. Vincent Street have been open and closed, and uh I've gotten turned around and actually even had to do a U-turn there on Georgiana Street, uh, you know, after going to Chipotle or Five Guys there. I I think uh e- e- once the traffic pattern gets set, um, and you don't have people trying to use Georgiana Street because Eddie Street is closed, um, I think that'll uh alleviate some. I mean, that you've got this large retail up there, there will be, you know, traffic in that area. Um, I I've talked to some of the neighbors, this vacating this section has been part of the plan since at least 2016 of Phase Two, is that correct?
Uh, it was in that timeframe, yes. I think the original plan, um, when we presented the original plan to them, there was a lot of pushback on on through traffic coming through.
That's what I've heard, more complaints about making sure that that was closed and there was a buffer um between the uh student housing there um and and the Georgiana Triangle neighborhood there.
So, yeah. That's that's the free feedback that I have largely heard and what we're we've what we've tried to respond to going back oh three years now. With this with this plan.
Thank you so much. I also.
Uh, Tim Sexton is also on the call with uh the with the university. Tim, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, yes, uh, this is Tim Sexton, address 51222, Outer Drive, South Bend, Indiana. Uh, I have received throughout uh the Eddie Street Phase Two planning and as well in the Phase Three numerous calls and and questions from the Triangle Homeowners Association uh that I've directed to Kite and responded to. This particular um issue was raised multiple times, and it was of the uh overwhelming majority that wanted to see that um road to be uh to be closed down and limiting that access. And um I have, I think it was a question of one of the council members earlier, have have others provided new feedback relative that I have heard nothing um to the contrary there.
Thank you, Mr. Sexton.
I I got a point of order, and and I don't mean any harm, I swear I do not. This is Henry. Um, is Mr. Sexton a part of their presentation?
Mr. Sexton is a part of uh the petitioner's. Correct. It works for the University of Notre Dame.
Okay. I didn't catch that earlier, in order to catch that during the during the uh the committee hearing, that's why I'm asking. That was at one time, so I didn't know.
My apologies, I don't I don't know if I stated that Notre Dame was the underlying landowner.
No, you didn't.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your question. At this time, I would like to uh turn it over to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill Number 19 dash 20?
Councilwoman McBride, this is Graham from the clerk's office. We do have one individual that has uh placed their uh spot in the queue, Ms. Leanne McLaughlin. Um, if you could please, uh, Ms. McLaughlin, uh, unmute yourself at this time. I'd be given, I believe, five minutes for public comment, um, and please say your uh name and address for the record.
Thank you.
Leanne McLaughlin, 1120 Georgiana. I I understand that many people in the neighborhood would like to see the road closed. I would question how often the city actually moves to vacate a street that is in fact used. Most of the time when the city is vacating property, they are vacating unused alleys, unused streets, dead-end streets, streets that really only impact one or two households rather than entire community. I feel like Eddie Street is part of our neighborhood, and we should be able to move in and out of our entire neighborhood without constraint. I would also suggest that because we have not actually seen what traffic looks like when the apartments are in use, when the new houses on the west side of Eddie Street are built, or I'm sorry, the west side of Georgiana are built, that it is not appropriate for us to vacate a of street that is used at this time simply upon speculation of what traffic will be like in the future. Kite and Notre Dame have built a number of green spaces into this project, um, and I think that those green spaces more than make up for the green space we lose from not having this prop, this street vacated. That that's really it.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Is there anyone else uh from the public wishing to speak on Bill 1920? At this time, in the hunt, the question, Bill is now closed, or I'm turning it over to the petitioner if you have a rebuttal?
Uh, I don't have a rebuttal at this time.
Right, it's not, uh, let's say. Yeah.
Chair, I'd like to make motions in this bill, 1920 to the full council favorably.
I had a comment before we went to a vote, but um I might just mine as a second. Just a comment, I don't think it's gonna change anything.
Second.
Mr. Davis.
Yes, thank you. Look, this is exactly the reason why I asked that question two weeks ago when this was on the first reading about traffic patterns. Um, I was admonished um by a colleague that assisted with us because I asked a question about future planning ideas. I think it's prudent on the end of the council to find out these things well in advance before we even vote on them. Traffic patterns can either interrupt or enhance traffic commerce. And if we don't look at how the money is going to end up flowing, commerce meaning money, traffic meaning money, South Bend is gonna be in a really, really bad predicament. We're sh- we're shutting down traffic patterns on the west side of the river, but we're opening them up on the east side of the river. It's fact. And so if they're doing on the east side of the river because it's helping to uh uh build a stronger tax base, then why are we not doing it on the west side of the river? I I I.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, I'll move back to you. Um, and we have a open and a second that was on the floor, so at this time, however, as clerk, will you take the roll call?
Yeah. Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Teska.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Nay.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Nay.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Bill Number 19 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. At this time, clerk Jones, would you please give Bill Number 2020 a second reading?
Yes. Public hearing on an ordinance to vacate the following described property. East end of Corby Boulevard, west of South Bend Avenue, portions of former Eddie Street and South Bend Avenue, right-ofways and covering the existing cul-de-sac north of Corby Boulevard and south side of Howard Street near the intersection of South Bend Avenue, a triangular piece of right-of-way within the limits of Old South Bend Avenue, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Um, yes, there is a committee report. Uh, Bill Number 2020 was read in committee, um, and it came out of committee with a favorable recommendation. And sorry about the mix-up earlier, the bills did get mixed up on paper, but this was a favorable recommendation to council.
Thank you. Is there a petition of protest?
Uh, yes, Tony Halsey with Kite Realty Group again. And um Notre Dame is, I I will clarify the underlying landowner um for this petition. Um, so as as we discussed during the the council meeting, um, I can share the screen if everyone would like. Um, this is the area we're talking about, um, south of Howard Street, east end of Corby, west of State Road 23. Site used to be bisected by Eddie Street, north to south, and then um on the northeastally direction from uh former South Bend Avenue before the road was realigned. In 2017, we vacated the lion's share of um Eddie Street and South Bend Avenue through this section of the site, leaving in place a cul-de-sac to allow for emergency vehicles to turn around and so forth at the intersection of Corby and South Bend. As we're now in the throes of design for um redevelopment this property for retail commercial use, uh, th- these sections of right-of-way are on not on through streets, so no longer needed um to move traffic uh, you know, through and out of the site, but they are needed um in order to allow for appropriate um redevelopment. So, um, that is my presentation, and if I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, council members. Any comments or questions for the petitioner? If not, I will turn it over to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public who can speak in favor or opposition to this bill? I yield.
Councilmember White, this is Graham Sparks from the city clerk's office. As of now, there's been no one that has requested a spot in the queue to speak in favor or in opposition to this bill, I yield.
Thank you, Graham.
I make a motion to sign twenty twenty to the full council, favorably.
Second.
Councilmember Tescia.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Sir, if you could unshare your screen, that'd be great.
Will do. Thank you very much, all.
Thank you. I would like to see the motion to rise to the committee of the whole, to the council.
So move.
Second.
Can I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Tescia.
Aye.
President White, uh, uh, sorry, President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Um, we will now go to third reading. Ms. Jones, uh, would you give third reading on nineteen twenty?
Third reading on nineteen twenty. Third reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property: East end of St. Vincent, east of Eddy Street, from the western boundaries of lot six and seven of Eddy Street Common, section two, to the western boundary of the right of way of Georgiana Street, South Bend, Indiana. Motion to adopt bill twenty.
Did I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Roll call.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Nay.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Nay.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Tescia.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, twenty twenty, please.
Twenty twenty. Third reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property: East end of Corby Boulevard, west of South Bend Avenue, portions of former Eddy Streets and South Bend Avenue, right of ways and covering the existing cul-de-sac north of Corby Boulevard and south side of Howard Street near the intersection of South Bend Avenue, a new piece of right of way within the limits of Old South Bend Avenue, South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to adopt bill twenty twenty.
Second.
Ms. Jones, roll call.
Uh, councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Tescia.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Uh, we will move to resolutions. Um, Ms. Jones, would you please read twenty zero eight?
Resolution twenty zero eight. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend confirming certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as three sixteen East Monroe Street, South Bend, four six six zero one, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year real property tax abatement for WSJM Inc.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to remind, uh, all councilmembers, uh, some of you are new. These are confirming, so these are a confirmation hearing on the, um, tax abatements that we heard, uh, two weeks ago. Uh, by state law, we have to hear these a second time, just confirming. There's no, um, committee report or committee input at this time. Uh, legally by law, you typically have to vote the same way that you voted two weeks ago on these confirmings, as long as nothing has changed, uh, from weeks ago until now. With that, uh, is there a petitioner or petitioner?
Yes, sir. Uh, Dan Buckenmeyer, uh, Director Business Development at the Department of Community Investment, fourteenth floor of the city county building. Uh, thank you, commissioners, or, or councilmembers. Um, we bring before you, uh, Graham, if you can shoot forward, uh, probably two, I'm sorry, back one slide, actually, there. Uh, so, uh, this is a facility at three sixteen, uh, Monroe Street, East Monroe Street. We, the city, uh, staff is very excited about seeing a, uh, rehabilitation of this building and reuse of this building, uh, by a company that is seeing a bit of a homecoming to South Bend, WSJM and four other stations coming back to South Bend where they originally were. Um, uh, the next slide outlines just some of the things we shared with you, the highlights of the private investment of over three and a half million dollars, twenty-three retained jobs, there will be three new jobs created. Um, we are providing a, uh, abatement. Now, uh, uh, if you will, abatements, there are three that we are talking about here. Um, a vacant building tax abatement, uh, crediting from them for the fact that they are rebuilding a building that has been vacant for several years, a, um, real property tax abatement, which gives them a bit of a break on the, uh, any increase in the value for a short amount of time, five years specifically. And then a personal property tax abatement, which abates, uh, again, five years on any taxes on the, uh, tremendous investment in, uh, radio equipment, studios and so on that will go into that building. It's a great boon for this specific part of town. It's a great boon, boon for a, uh, building that was a problem building. Uh, Bill Gamble from, uh, Midwest Family Broadcasting, I know, and Bernie Langer on. Uh, gentlemen, if you want to add anything, and then we'll open up questions.
No, thank you, Dan. Bill Gamble, six six four one Dockside Drive, South Bend. I'm the general manager for Midwest Family here in South Bend. Um, I, I have to thank the council for the meeting two weeks ago. I, I will tell you that the, uh, the welcome and the encouragement for investors back into the city was, uh, it, it felt great. Uh, the day after the Tribune story came out, uh, some of our potential new neighbors made a point to welcome us to the neighborhood. Uh, been able to spark, speak with Mike Coleman of the Monroe Street Association. He'll be attending the, uh, meeting there at least shortly, uh, in June, and, uh, uh, we'd like to thank you because we're very excited. Uh, as I said last week, USVT signed on on July third, nineteen twenty-two, and we are looking forward to having our one hundredth anniversary i- in South Bend.
And this is, uh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Sure, Bernie Lang.
Name and address, please.
Sure, Bernie Lang, seventy-six Madison Street, Madison, Wisconsin. Um, with National Construction, we've previously constructed ground-up buildings for Midwest Family, uh, one in Madison, Wisconsin, one in Springfield, Missouri, uh, built a great relationship with them. They're so excited about this building. They like to, to find the buildings, either, either build them that way or in this, in this case, find a building that can withstand like an F-four tornado because when something bad happens through Mother Nature, they have to be online and they have to be on the air. And this is a, a great building for that purpose, so we're really excited about it.
Thanks, sir. Uh, is there any questions from council? Hearing none. We'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on bill, uh, resolution twenty zero eight. Um, Graham, do you have anybody?
Ms. President, no. There have been, there have been no one to, uh, to sign up for that.
Thank you. We'll turn it back to council. What's your pleasure on twenty zero eight?
Uh, motion to move bill twenty oh eight for passage.
Second.
Second.
Thank you all. Uh, Ms. Jones, roll call, please.
I'm sorry. Uh, Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Tescia.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Uh, would you please read twenty ten?
Twenty ten. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend confirming certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as three sixteen East Monroe Street, South Bend, four six six zero one, economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for WSJM Inc.
To your presenter.
Uh, I'm sorry, President Scott, same presentation, uh, same, uh, company. Um, again, this, uh, personal property tax abatement would address, uh, five-year abatement on personal property taxes on equipment installed inside the building.
Thank you. What is your name and address for the record?
Pardon me, Dan Buckenmeyer, uh, fourteenth floor of the city county building, Department of Community Investment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anybody, uh, petitioners want to add anything that you didn't add already?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Um, council, any questions?
Motion to move bill twenty ten for passage.
Oop, hang on. We need to check to see if the public wants input.
Yep, sorry.
President, there, there have been nobody, uh, there's nobody from the public that has, uh, wished to speak in favor or in opposition to this bill. I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Niskowski. Your motion stands. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Tescia.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, twenty twelve, please.
Twenty twelve. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend confirming certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as three sixteen East Monroe Street, South Bend, four six six zero one, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year vacant building tax abatement for WSJM.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Yes, sir. Dan Buckenmeyer, uh, Director of Business Development in Community Investment, fourteenth floor of county city building. So again, uh, same company, uh, generally the same, uh, presentation applies. Um, this specific abatement gives them additional, uh, uh, I guess, credit or abatement on the building itself, the existing tax value, given that they are repurposing it and, uh, taking a, uh, long vacant building and, and bringing it back into the tax world. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Sparks, anyone from the public?
Uh, Ms. President, no, sir.
Thank you. We'll turn it back to council. What's your pleasure?
Motion to move bill twenty twelve for passage.
Was that a second? Thank you. Ms. Jones, roll call.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Tescia.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, twenty fourteen, please.
Twenty fourteen. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend confirming certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as seventeen oh two Robinson Street, South Bend, four six six one three, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Baymar Plastics.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Yes, sir. Dan Buckenmeyer, Director Business Development, or Department of Community Investment, fourteenth floor of the city county building. Uh, so Baymar Plastics, uh, you can go to the next slide, Graham. Thank you. Perfect. Um, is a longstanding business in South Bend on the s- near southeast side, a woman-owned business. Um, in even the best of times, it, uh, behooves us to support a company that is doing, taking actions to strengthen themselves, make themselves more diversified, uh, to keep both their existing employees, uh, employed in our community as well as bring on new ones. In this case, they are expanding their production capabilities and looking into new markets. Um, they are investing in new equipment and we want to, the Department of Community Investment recommends that, uh, we support them doing so with, by abating those personal property taxes just on that equipment. There's no abatement on any property or anything else, uh, real property. Uh, Ms., uh, Tricia Blair, CFO, and Heather Meisel, I think, uh, CEO, are both on the call if they would like to add anything.
Oh, so, yes, this is Heather Meisel, the president and CEO of Baymar Plastics. Um, so thank you, common council members for hearing us and considering our personal, uh, petition for personal property tax statement. Uh, we are looking at, uh, the necessity for automation and expansion in twenty twenty. Um, so primarily, we serve the automotive market, um, and we also dabble in medical RV and consumer goods. Um, we consider this expansion and automation essential to the company's survival. Um, over the last three years, go ahead. Can I hear your question?
No, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry. I'm Heather Meisel, seventeen oh two Robinson Street, South Bend.
Thank you.
So we're increasing our press size.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I have a, must be a microphone problem. Um, so we're increasing our press size capacity and exist, in addition to auxiliary tooling and equipment, we're adding thermolators, CNC, EDM chains, um, electronic hoists, to beef up our infrastructure by improving our IT solutions with new computers, new software, communication equipment, um, in addition to upgrading our ERP. Um, automation's the name of the game when it comes to plastics these days that we're going to compete with the Asian markets, um, and that's what we're trying to do here in America.
Thank you so much. Counsel, are there any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Graham, is there anybody? Graham Sparks, is there anybody from the public wishing to speak?
Ms. President, there is no one from the public wishing to speak. I yield.
Thank you. Turn it back to council. What's your motion?
Motion to move bill twenty fourteen for passage.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Jones, roll call.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Tescia.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
President Scott. President Scott?
There'd be an "aye" and the bill was 2014. I'm sorry. I said 2015. So, thank you so much.
Nine ayes.
Ms. Jones, would you please read 2015?
2015, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, calling on Governor Eric J. Holcomb to initiate a more robust compassionate program for the early release of non-violent incarcerated persons most vulnerable to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Absolutely. And I want to make mention too, because I'm looking at the paper right now. I've got some problems with the timing, but co-sponsor on there as well is Ms. Lori Hammond.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you have committee report.
Just one mention, one moment. There needs to be a committee report. I'm sorry, Mr. Warner, on the committee report?
Yes, the bill comes from the Committee of Health Public Safety with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Mr. Davis, Hammond, go ahead with your presentation.
You see, Tim, I respond to commands, man. Do it well. Awesome. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, calling on Governor Eric J. Holcomb to initiate a more robust and compassionate program for the early release of non-violent incarcerated persons most vulnerable to the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the governor of Indiana, Eric J. Holcomb, has issued several executive orders intended to protect the citizens of Indiana from COVID-19 pandemic and whereas the Indiana Department of Correction has issued preparedness and response plans for the COVID-19 pandemic and whereas jails and prisons are designed to maximize control of incarcerated population instead of minimizing disease transmission. The fact is compounded by, number one, overcrowded, unsanitary conditions, lack of adequate access to hygiene materials, much such as clean water or hand sanitizers. Number two, poor nutrition and failure to adhere to recognized standards for disease prevention, all of which have disastrous public health effects. And whereas the frequent transfer of individuals from one jail facility to another and intake of newly detained individuals from the community further complicate prevention and detection of infectious disease outbreaks. A timely response to report and observe symptoms is needed to interrupt viral transmissions. Yes, delays in testing, diagnosis, and access to care are dangerous in jails and prisons. And whereas statistics released by IDOC already revealed at least 278 staff members and 605 incarcerated persons tested positive for COVID-19, which two confirmed are presumed deaths for staff members and 16 confirmed or presumed deaths of incarcerated persons from COVID-19. And whereas these numbers continue to increase and are likely understated due to the limited number of diagnostic tests performed on this population. And whereas health systems and other resources are already severely packed by the daily exponential increase in COVID-19 cases and whereas intensive care unit bed spaces reaching capacity, rapid disastrous outbreaks in Indiana jails and prisons will put further strain on the already saturated healthcare system as infected individuals are transferred for treatment to local hospitals, thereby exacerbating issues of contamination of the virus and put more members of our community at risk. Whereas incarcerated persons are one of the most medically neglected and vulnerable populations. And whereas within this population are even more vulnerable persons, including those who are 65 and older with underlying health conditions. And whereas World Health Organization states that the rights of all people must be upheld and all public health measures must be carried carried out without discrimination of kind. People in prisons and the other places of detention are not only likely to be more vulnerable to infection with COVID-19, they are also especially vulnerable to human rights violations. It is the state's responsibility to protect incarcerated people. And whereas all people under the control of the state are entitled to the protection of the state. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, follow Section 1. Governor Eric J. Holcomb is called upon to initiate more robust and compassionate plans to plans initiated by the federal government and the governments of several other states. Section 2, plans should be, should include a minimum the following points. Number one, provide the diagnostic testing and medical all COVID-related free of charge to all incarcerated persons together with those released under this plan. Number two, work with judges for the immediate release of as many as possible from the United States prison system, in particular those 65-plus, those with underlying health conditions, those due to be released within the next 12 to 15 months, and those who are low-level nonviolent offenders. Number three, assign signatures to everyone currently held on bail or signature bars, I'm sorry, to everyone currently held on bail or pre-tile detention. Number four, guarantee conditions of release with the least restrictions possible discouraging the use of electronic monitoring. Number five, provide testing for everyone who traffics in and out of Indiana State prisons, including staff and personnel that work at the prison. Number six, requires the availability of sufficient soap-based hand sanitizer for the incarcerated individuals without a charge. Number seven, ensure those released have access to trauma and form community-based services in order for in order to help stabilize their transition back into society. Number eight, conduct a needs assessment in collaboration with social workers and community organizations to determine what resources and support may be needed for individuals prior to the release. Number nine, provide free video and phone calls to individuals in Indiana prisons until they are released in light of in-person visits being defended. Number 10, without the transfer of incarcerated individuals from one person to another and from one cell block to another, as this would do more to increase the risk of COVID-19 transmission than curb its spread. Section 3, should be initiated immediately in order to protect now only incarcerated persons and staff at prisons and jails, but also community at large, which will inevitably be adversely affected by continuing spread of the disease within the prisons and jails. Councilmembers, I ask that you guys adopt this by full acclamation.
Thank you. Ms. Hammond, is there anything you would like to add? Any council members, do they have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have a, I have a comment that I'd like to make when there's time.
Okay, we'll go to comments after the public hearing. Any questions at this point?
Yeah. Sorry, President Scott, I was muted apparently. Can I make a statement?
Yes, yes, you may.
I just want to reiterate that these are extremely vulnerable populations. Many of them are people of color. Many of them come from the most impoverished regions of the state. And so we need to make sure that we are focusing on the care and the well-being of these individuals as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tashka, I believe you had a question?
I do. I've got several. So we had talked earlier in committee and we ran out of time for some of my questions, but we had talked about, you know, the governor's authority, you know, to do these things and how he's essentially, you know, left up to a lot of the, the local judges and prosecutors as far as the, as far as the local jails go. And I believe what Counselor Davis was talking about was what the state prison system. And so I wanted to ask some questions about some of the points under Section 2. Specifically, some of the, some of the statements such as, you know, providing sufficient hand soap, those types of things. Is there evidence that this is not currently happening in the state prison system?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yeah.
Okay, great. No, that was not the intent, sir. The intent is to make sure that what we are asking for is put down on paper. There is not any idea of what is actually happening in the prison systems, but we do know that many people have died and are getting ill, whether it's a worker or inmate or both. We want to make sure that they have adequate resources behind those prison walls to help prevent the spread of COVID. So it's not an accusation being made. It's just a recommendation, sir.
Okay, so that answers, I think, maybe a couple of my other questions in regards to Section 2, you know, number five. Like, it's my understanding that at least those that are symptomatic individuals on both sides, right, the staff and inmates are being tested. Six as well, you know, that, that, you know, these things may already be happening. If you look at some information released by the Indiana Department of Corrections, there's a very kind of comprehensive plan on how they, how they are dealing with this and how they're testing and quarantining and trying to introduce mitigating efforts within the prison population. So, so I just wanted to clarify, clarify that.
But I don't take what they are doing as necessarily gospel. I have family in the deal, the Department of Corrections. I have friends as well. Some of the stories are not the best, okay? So I'm not going to go into that because we're dealing with a document that's going through government body. But what I want you to understand is that everything that you do read is not necessarily consistent with what the practice is behind the walls of the prison.
I would like to also add that there are several different agencies that work with these populations and they're not reporting that it's this perfectly smooth process either. So I think it's good that we state and have it on paper so that they know that we are being vigilant.
Okay.
Mr. Tashka, any other questions?
Thank you. I don't have any other questions at this point. May I have some comments when we come back around?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Hearing none. I will open up to the public, anyone from the public wishing to speak on Resolution 2015. Mr. Graham, Sparks?
Mr. President, no. There has been no one to put their name in the queue. I yield.
Thank you. We will start with any comments. I think Ms. Tomas Morgan was the first one to mention she wanted a comment.
Thank you, President Scott. Thank you to the co-sponsors of this bill, Ms. Lori Hammond and Mr. Henry Davis. There's nothing in this, in this resolution that I disagree with. In principle, I agree with what it says and, and, and how it is written. I do want to share just a couple of comments about, and maybe it's myself learning about these kinds of resolutions. We know, I understand this resolution has zero legal effect. Sometimes it feels like such resolutions play to, to politics and for political gain. I want to encourage the two of you who are co-sponsors of the bill, who I see also see themselves as advocates for this, to take outside of the bill, outside of the resolution, concrete action steps and conversations with, with the governor or other bodies that can actually make, turn this resolution into reality. And so that's just my comment I wanted to share, request that I make to you. I also just want to recognize our citizen member, Mr. Desmond Upchurch, who I thought in the committee meeting raised some really important questions and had some insightful comments that he had raised and wanted to just raise that up here. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe, Mr. Tashka, you also had a comment?
Yeah, I've got maybe a couple. So, so one is, again, Councilwoman Niskoski brought this up in committee, but under subsection, some, or sorry, Section 2, subsection 4, discouraging use of electronic monitoring, that is one that, that's a piece of this that, that I'm struggling with. And I understand the petitioner's response in committee about the financial impact of that, but but I think that, you know, we, you know, if releasing folks because of health reasons do need to, you know, continue to monitor those individuals and so, or at least have the flexibility for, for that. And so I take some issue with that. Also, seven and eight, again, and kind of echoing what Councilwoman Tomas Morgan said, not that I necessarily disagree with anything, any of these pieces, right? So ensuring that folks have access to trauma-informed community-based services to transition back to society and needs assessments to determine what resources and support may be needed. These two pieces, I think you could take out of this and, and, right, I mean, despite COVID-19, right? This could be something that would be, could be handled or at least asked for kind of in a separate resolution, you know, even if we weren't in this pandemic situation. And so, you know, my, my, my question, I guess, would be, my, my, not question, but kind of, that would be that, I'm not sure if we're, if we're asking for the, you know, immediate release of folks, you know, is there, what's the timing? And the timing of, of doing these types of things, right, when we're in an emergency situation? And so, so there's, there's some issues, I think, there with that as well. And then again, just to echo Councilwoman Tomas Morgan, I think everything she just said about, you know, these types of resolutions and the effectiveness of, you know, I would, I would echo all of her comments there. So appreciate the, the intent here. I do have some, some issues with the, the language itself, but that, that's my comment.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Warner.
We've got a few, just a few comments. I was going to make them in committee, but we kind of ran out of time. I think, I'm not a big fan, I've said this before, I'm going to keep saying it. I'm not a big fan of these resolutions where we have zero authority or zero force to, and we're telling other governmental bodies that we believe they should be doing something. force to, and we're telling other governmental bodies that we believe they should be doing something. Uh, my experience is that you can have much more success if you reach out and talk to these governmental agencies. Uh, if you call the DOC, the Director of the DOC, and, and talk to these folks, uh, you can find some bridge and build some common ground. You know, the, the council in the past has done a lot of these, uh, tell President Trump to do this, or tell Congress to do that. And, uh, my experience is these are forgotten as quickly as we've bowed on them. So I encourage the council going forward to, uh, you know, really think hard about these resolutions. That being said, I do support the spirit of the resolution and the outcome that attempts to get to. Um, I do want to, you know, I provided a stat earlier, uh, you know, for information, back in March, the State Supreme Court gave, decided that, uh, one large approach for the whole state was not going to work for 92 counties. There would not be a proper cookie cutter approach and, uh, encouraged all the, the local judges, the local prosecutors and the local sheriffs to come up with a plan for their county as far as releasing people, as far as, uh, testing, as far as medical care for individuals. Uh, and that happened, uh, here in St. Joseph County. Um, our local jail's population is down one-third. Uh, across the state, the average in the county jails is down a third. Um, we've had, you know, there were some numbers listed in the committee meeting and our state county jail numbers far exceed those numbers. We've had 5,600 people reduced, uh, in, in the county jail and the population number. So, you know, a lot of this stuff is happening at the local level as the governor intended. Uh, you know, that being said, I do support, uh, what the, the resolution is trying to get to, um, and understand that it's focused more towards the DOC. Uh, even though I have some disagreement, uh, as Councilman Teshka does with some of the wording in the text of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Is there anybody else wanting to make a comment?
As one of the co-sponsors, can I comment?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the input that all of you have brought forth. I just would like to say that this resolution is basically a way of expressing our will. It is the first step to moving forward and contacting the, um, necessary powers downstate that can make a difference around this issue. And I do intend to move forward with this and any of you that would like to join me, I would welcome that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Uh, anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Hold on, Tim. Um, I sent a letter to Graham. I don't know if he's got it or not. Graham, did you get it?
Yeah, Councilmember Davis, I was about to text you. Uh, you, you emailed me, um, what seems to be a letter of support for this resolution?
Yes, sir. Can you read that to the record for me, please?
So, it seems to be, uh, the counsel from the city of Indianapolis, Marion County, Keith Graves, Counselor, District 13, to whom my concern, the COVID-19 pandemic has taken a lot of lives in the span of one month. Pandemic has affected everyone in the state of Indiana, the old, the young, the rich, the poor, the free and those behind prison walls. COVID-19 has already killed both inmates and custodial staff in many prisons in Indiana. Prisoners do not have the ability to be separated from the sick nor to, quote, "social distance," end quote, themselves. As City Counselor, District 13, I'm writing to express my concern with the risk of COVID-19 that the prisoners of Indiana face and to try to be a voice for the criminally convicted in order to survive the novel coronavirus life as we know it must change. I support any and all efforts to protect prisoners from the exposure of the virus. Sincerely signed, Keith Graves, City Counselor, City County Counselor, District 13.
Okay, thank you. Um, reason why I asked it to be read in the record, obviously, because it needs to be read in the record. The second reason why is because as this process continues with Lori as well, uh, this resolution will be also sent to the governor's office, but what, what is happening at this point is that, um, upon passage, I'm asking you guys to pass this, this will end up going to different municipal bodies. It will go down to Evansville, it will go down to Indianapolis, it will go to, uh, Gary, it will go to Fort Wayne, the largest, um, the larger sized, uh, communities here in the state of Indiana. With an effort to get them to pass a resolution of the same, to help push the governor and the state, uh, the state legislator to action. And so that's the bill and that's the idea, but we had to clear hurdle one here first. So South Bend will be obviously, um, the, the torchbearer in this, this fight to getting some equality for those behind bars. So I thank you all for your favorable support on this. It's just not a feel-good moment. It's not, uh, something that we are doing because it's political. We're doing it because it's necessary and because we're elected people, elected members of a county, a, a city, uh, government. We are required to act upon and act on behalf of our constituency base. And many of these people that we are impacting, uh, have people who are behind prison walls. So it's just not a feel-good moment. Let's not diminish our role in our society. We have authority and I plan on using it and I hope you help me use it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, we are at the point for a motion.
I make a mo, let me see. I make a motion for the adoption of Resolution 20-15.
Thank you.
Roll call, Ms. Jones, please.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
You said aye?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, would you please read, we'll go to first readings, and would you please give first reading to 12:20?
12:20, First Reading on An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana. Adding Article One, Division Two, Sections Two, Dash Twelve, Point Two, Point One, Two, and Including Two-Dash-Twelve Point Two, Point Nine of Chapter Two of the South Bend Municipal Code to Create a Citizens Police Complaint Board and Procedures Governing the Board.
I would like, uh, like to make a motion, um, that 12:20 go to, um, Community Relations Subcommittee for first, I mean, for second and third reading on, it helped me all of the day, because I'm lost on it right now.
Mr. Davis, there is no Subcommittee?
Yes.
Just regular committee?
Regular committee.
Well, regular committee, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, what are the dates that we're dealing with, Tim? I'm sorry.
It would be June eighth.
I don't like all of this technology at one time. I'm just gonna be honest with you. This stuff is like doing me. Again, I'm sorry, is, uh, June what, 12?
June eighth is the next Common Council meeting and then June 22nd.
Okay, okay, those dates for second and third public reading.
On which one?
This, the, uh, June 12th, I'm sorry.
June eighth and June 22nd.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, June eighth. For second public hearing.
Is there a second? Ms. Jones, roll call.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, uh, please give first reading to 21:20.
One. Twenty-one twenty. First reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the South Bend, Indiana. Amending ordinance numbers 10472-Dash-16 and 10682-Dash-19 as to the annual pay and residency incentive pay of sworn members of the South Bend Police Department for calendar year 2020.
Is there a motion to send those to Personnel and Finance for, uh, June's eighth hearing?
So moved.
Aye, second.
Roll call, Councilmember.
Ms. Jones, roll call.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Davis?
I told you I was not having this technology. Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Could I entertain a motion to set the hearing date for the appeal of a denial of a certificate of appropriateness, COA, Dad, Number 20191007A, Ben and Carrie Moblin versus Historic Preservation Commission for June 7th?
So moved.
Aye, second.
Want to clarify, Mr. President, this is Graham from the clerk's office. You said June 7th, you mean June 8th, that meeting?
I'm sorry, June 8th.
Just want to make sure.
Ready for work, roll call.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
President Scott?
It's on mute.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, everything went dead. Um, are we still unfinished business?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you guys hear me read? Oh, no, not on, yeah, we are on unfinished business. I'm sorry. Is there any other unfinished business?
Yes, it is. I just have a really quick comment about, um, our, as we're leading into a new idea or a new, um, I guess homeless, um, I, I guess there's another, there's going to be another advocacy group built out of community members or elected officials. Uh, one thing that I want to, um, point at, today was, um, really difficult out there, uh, for many members of the community, police, the whole nine. Uh, but one thing I want to make mention of is that if we're interested in helping, we can't show up with a SWAT team to gain control of a situation that is not violent. Um, we do, in that manner and that way, we can expect that same type of response from the people that are, quote-unquote, being policed. I know everybody gave kudos to everybody that was out there because the conversation and the situation was calmed down. But that's not what I got. I got phone calls about the activity and, and, and some of the violent nature in which it was handled by our local police department. I don't know how SWAT ends up, um, out in front of some homeless people that we know that's unarmed, that is very vulnerable and need help. I don't know how that happens. Uh, I don't know why that is good practice, but that's what actually happened. So we need to pull back, retool our position. If we're interested in helping, um, maybe not show up with guns and assault rifles. I think that, that probably will make a little bit more, the atmosphere a little bit softer. And then have a better conversation with those who are trying to help. I digress.
Thank you. Is there any other unfinished business? Seeing, and we'll move to new business. As you, uh, received from our attorney, Bob Palmer, um, we're, uh, offering up a standard operating procedure, number 012020, Self-Income Council Dressing Electronic Meeting attendance. Um, according to state law and the governor, we can actually put in place a standard operating procedure, which we would like to do, uh, that would allow council members to, uh, who cannot attend regularly, once we go back to in-person council meetings, uh, be given the opportunity to attend and vote, um, via electronic, basically the same that we can do our council meetings now. Um, and Bob Palmer, correct me if I'm, if I made a, make a mistake on this. Um, the standard operating procedure, we would, someone would have to have an extraordinary, uh, reason they could not be there. Maybe flu, maybe some reason they had emergency travel. It's not just because you don't want to come to a council meeting, you can do it electronically from home. There's got to be, uh, a purpose and a reason. Council members there would be in control of, um, indiscretion to say whether that person can join the meeting electronically or not. Uh, there's got to be at least, uh, six council members, uh, present, uh, presiding over the meeting, I'm sorry. Uh, that could be either electronically or in person. We need at least, uh, three members to be uh, in personal attendance. And the one, one issue, if you guys read the SOP, is number five. Uh, a member who participates in the meeting by electronic communication may not cast a deciding vote on any official action. So if you are not there and you want to go vote and you are that deciding vote in a five-four vote, uh, your vote would not be cast as the deciding vote. Your, your vote would be cast in the majority, whether it be to adopt or defeat. Um, that's the one thing. What that means is someone couldn't be sitting in a ruba and make a, uh, a final decision that they couldn't do it in public. Uh, Mr. Palmer, am I correct in that? Is there anything else you want to add to that detail?
Uh, that's correct. I believe it's number seven. I, I.
Yeah, it's number seven.
Okay. No, that's correct. If, if you're not participating physically in person, you cannot cast a deciding vote.
And, um, other than that, you would be able to virtually be a part of this meeting and, uh, cast votes. So any comments on that? So any comments on that?
President Scott, uh, let me turn my camera on. I just have a clarifying question, if that's all right.
Yeah, no problem.
Um, just going back to what you said in the beginning, so the wording is the decision of extraordinary circumstances, um, is that the discretion of the presiding member physically present at the meeting? So you're saying that those of us at the meeting? Okay, okay. Thanks for that.
Correct.
Okay. And is it, um, I'm sorry, I don't have the SOP in front of me, but are there, I mean, does it state there examples of extraordinary circumstances? I know you mentioned a couple right here. Um. Okay. Is there a need for us to do that?
I think it would be on a case-by-case basis, um, as things come up, um. You know, a, a sick um family member or something that would prevent them from coming there physically, uh, something on that nature, something on a more serious nature than um just deciding that someone wouldn't be able to attend. Now, there is no rules or laws put in place. There's no recalling in uh the state of Indiana for council members. You know, you don't even have to show up to any of these meetings and the voters would uh make that decision later. Uh-huh, but um, this is a way to avoid any attendance issues down the road. Uh, if you could, you know, maybe business or work has called you out of town, but you can attend that meeting in the evening. Um, and we would have take it case by case. Bob, is there anything else you're thinking on that?
No, not really. I, I, as I explained to, to you earlier, I think this would be a truly extraordinary and seldom-used provision once we get outside the pandemic issues. Um, you can always uh choose to have an excused uh absence from a meeting. This comes into play only, oh, not only, but primarily if there's something of specific importance to you that you do want to discuss and vote on, and you think it's important that you be there or be a member voting and can't physically be there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody? Okay. Um, Bob, we don't need a vote or anything on this, do we?
The council has to vote. It has to be a pass by majority vote.
Okay. Councilmembers, are there any other uh concerns, questions, motions on this?
Anything I get?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
No, I don't have any concerns or questions. This is Henry.
Okay.
Okay. Procedurally, you would need a motion and a second and a roll call vote to pass it.
Motion for.
I second.
Ms. Jones, roll call, please.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka.
Aye.
Councilmember Nisguski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. We will move to privileged floor. Privileged floors where individuals who wish to address the common council must state their name and address. Uh, individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time limit for this portion of the meeting shall be thirty minutes. Uh, individuals may address only issues which the city has jurisdiction. Individuals shall not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on the agenda. Council president may assign topics raised by individuals during the privileged floor to the appropriate council member or request uh city clerk to contact a, a member of the city administration for review and comment. All topics assigned shall be responded in regular scheduled common council meeting. Uh, Mr. Graham, would you please go down the order? I will uh keep time. And those, I'll give a thirty-second uh warning before uh someone's time is cut off.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, the first uh individual that has placed on their name to speak is uh Eric Alblos. Is Eric Alblos in the meeting? And if, if they are, please, at this time unmute yourself, uh, and please state your name and address for the record and begin your remarks.
Um, hello, everyone. My name is Eric Alblos. I live at twenty-five thirteen Erskine Boulevard. I had, I had comments about what happened today at the tent city. First, I would, first, I, I would like to say I'm just a volunteer, but I am certified, I'm a triple-certified health inspector. And um what happened today was a, a show of complete lack and neglect of leadership in the city. Since the amnesty closed during the pandemic, these people had nowhere to go as no places were um in taking homeless folks into programs because they were quarantined, ordered by the mayor. That left them no, no place to go, and they went to the first tent city. When we were being removed from tent city number one, I contacted the nuisance officer, Keenan Lane. I sat down with him and explained the plan to move to the next lot. I also uh made sure that Mayor Mueller knew we were going to go across the street. I also contacted um just the city, and I also contacted just the general police. I let everyone know, if this is not where they can go, please let us know where you would rather them be. Nobody contacted me with any information on where they would rather these people that had nowhere else to go be. So the next day, we moved across the street to tent city number two. We cleaned and I raked, and there wasn't a cigarette butt left in tent city number one. We tried to observe social distancing with the tents. Um, but on this occasion, the city of South Bend would not allow our donated porta-potties or hand sanitation stations to be on the property. So these homeless folks had no toilet to use for seven days, which is a health hazard in and of itself, even if we were not in a pandemic. I heard a lot of people congratulating the police today, but the police have force, they have weapons, and they have the power of color and government. The only people helping the homeless in tent city number one and tent city number two are residents, unpaid volunteers, community members, activists, and church members. We've had not one person from the city visit tent city. We've had.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Hughes.
We've had, we've had nobody from the local health department. And I will tell you that the local, if you do not know, the local health department wrote to the city this weekend telling them that was not their recommendation to remove the city because of COVID and to put a toilet, and it also was against CDC recommendations to remove the encampment, and you endangered our community today by spreading the virus to all of our communities by.
Ms. Blos, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Graham, next person, please.
Yes, Mr. President, next on the list is Ms. Rhonda Hughes. Ms. Hughes, if you're here, please unmute yourself this time. State your name and address for the record and proceed with your remarks. Thank you.
Hello, Rhonda Hughes, ten twenty-nine Riverside Drive, South Bend. I am the community advocate at Broadway Christian Parish and work with people who are homeless or semi-homeless four days a week. Um, I want to applaud the council for inviting Mayor Mueller, and I think the mayor gave a good summary of where the city's been uh over the past several years with regard to homelessness. I, I applaud the um quick and uh progressive stance that the mayor took in relation to the isolation center and his use of um funds for that from funds that are available nationally and from the state. Um, I also applaud the fact that he is not trying to kick this can down the road. Clearly, from the homelessness task force several years ago, there are key recommendations that haven't been fulfilled, and rather than continuing to uh just put this off, he is willing to take some emergency measures, again, using funds that are going to be made available in order to provide for housing for people, as A-Rakel said, uh, is urgently needed for the sake of um health and safety for the people involved and for our community. I, I'd like to address some of the comments made by uh council members. Uh, Member Scott said that the timing of his, of the mayor's uh interest in doing this is horrible, and I would simply say that it's especially horrible timing for people who are unhoused. So frankly, there is a lot of urgency around um providing housing. Um, Henry, Representative, um, Councilmember Davis said that he's concerned about the cost to the city. In fact, how, the Housing First approach that's been advocated saves communities money. That's one of the reasons why it has been so successful around the country. But I would agree with uh Councilmember Davis and with, with others who have said as much, that the move today uh was largely unnecessary and appears uh to have been undertaken with a bit more uh.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Hughes.
Serious. Um, again, there's two million dollars in CBDC money and uh emergency solutions grant monies that the city can use for this. I applaud Councilmember Hammond for her advocating for a homeless services coordinator and a better plan than simply carrying, than simply clearing people out. Clearing people out does not get rid of um the, the problem that exists for the most vulnerable in our community. Also.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Your time is up. Thank you. Mr., Mr. Sparks, next person, please.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, uh, is Sarah Nolton here? Uh, you are, you're, uh, Sarah, please unmute yourself this time. State your name and address for the record and proceed with your remarks. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Nolton, five oh one East Woodside Street in South Bend. Um, my question is for James Mueller, um, if that is allowed. Um, I guess I'm wondering, you know, the CDC, the CDC clearly states that um clearing encampments can cause people to disperse throughout the community and break connections with service providers. This increases the potential uh uh, a potential for infectious diseases to spread. Um, that's a direct quote. And so I'm wondering why the order goes against the CDC recommendation, um, and I have linked the source for that in the chat when I asked the question earlier.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Nolton, this is directing to the common council. We do not answer questions. It's just your time to uh state what you need to state. We can pass that along to the mayor's office as well.
Um, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sparks, next person, please.
Yes, is, uh, is Rebecca Royce uh still here? If so, please, Rebecca, this time, please unmute yourself. Uh, state your name and address for the record and proceed with your remarks. Thank you. Rebecca, uh, Royce, are, are you here in the uh, in the chat? I guess we'll go to the next one, maybe Tim, and I'll, I'll see if she gets reconnected here.
Correct. That's fine.
Is, is Kelly Pickle, or Pick, Pickroll in the, in the lobby?
Hello, yes, Kelly Bickel. Um, I'm at one seven eight eight oh Tanager Lane, South Bend. I work as a client.
Kelly, if I may please, sorry, Graham Sparks here. Um, I think Rebecca Royce may have just got in. Uh, Rebecca, you'll, you'll proceed after, after Kelly, but please, Kelly, proceed. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, sure. So I work as a client success manager for a company that helps maintain homeless management information systems. I'm also on the board of Northern Indiana Atheists, and my ethical duty as a citizen of South Bend requires me to speak out about the city's response to the homeless. So we know that eviction signs were posted on the city lot on Friday morning, giving homeless only a few days to find alternative housing. During this time, the homeless shelters were closed. They remained full. The weather amnesty shelter had closed down, and the mayor had provided no alternative options. So while you and I were out celebrating Memorial Day and honoring our nation's hero, the city was making plans to confiscate all the tents and belongings of the homeless who were residing on that property. The eviction was incredibly cruel, in my opinion, heartless. It was also very unusual for a town to insist that homeless people are violating the law by the mere fact of them not being able to afford housing. It's also extremely shameful and shady that the mayor decided to perform this action this morning ahead of the city council meeting, so that nobody from the public could even voice their concerns with evicting the homeless during a pandemic. It is not the homeless's fault that our economy is so bad, and it's not their fault that the city has failed to provide enough housing first beds for the chronically homeless. This past December, the Supreme Court decided that they would not overturn a ruling in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals that basically ruled it's a violation of a homeless person's basic civil rights to evict them from public property when there are not enough low-barrier shelter beds available to meet the needs of the street homeless. The Ninth Circuit ruled that this type of eviction violates the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution, is considered cruel and unusual punishment. Now, I'm aware that the Ninth Circuit does not cover Indiana, but the Supreme Court decision not to hear the case means that they see no reason that the ruling was incorrect. By using such cruel and unusual punishment against the homeless here in South Bend, the city has opened itself up to a lawsuit that they would surely lose. The only reason that the city took advantage of the homeless and treated them so cruelly is because the city knows that the homeless have no resources to fight this illegal overreach of the city and the police. The mayor and the city and the South Bend Police Department all owe the homeless a major apology, and they need to work to make this right. South Bend must reopen the amnesty shelter until such time that the city establishes the Low Barrier Gateway Center for the homeless, as was recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sparks, next person, please.
Yes, going back to Ms. Rebecca Royce. If Rebecca is here, please unmute yourself this time. Please state your name and address for the record and proceed with your remarks. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Rebecca Royce, four nine nine one, north four seventy-five east, Leesburg, Indiana. I apologize, my internet cut out a few minutes ago. Um, I, I just wanted to make a statement that um not that long ago in the South Bend Tribune, there was an article stating that the mayor had made an announcement that he would not be breaking up this encampment. Um, I understand that this uh section is for the council, but I would like, I would like the council to at least put pressure and discuss with him why he would come out and say that he would not break up the encampment and that this would not be something that he would see himself doing in the foreseeable future. And then like a week later, everyone was removed from their uh, their place of residence at the time. Um, I also want to say too that um it is absolutely despicable and deplorable that these people have nowhere to go and yet were forced off the only place that they could find to have shelter. Um, the weather amnesty is owned by the city. I don't understand why we can't be using it for these people. Uh, it's, it's a building ready to go. It's already owned by the city. There is no reason that these people can't stay there. Um, and on top of that, uh, during a pandemic especially, as was stated prior by Sarah, um, the CDC has strongly recommended that nobody break up these kinds of tent cities at this time due to dispersing the virus across the city and across um different areas in the community. So um, I just, I just want to say that I think it's, it, you know, putting, making people, uh, calling them a public nuisance, calling human beings a public nuisance is absolutely despicable. They're human beings. They deserve to be given the dignity and respect that human beings deserve, and how they were treated today was not the dignity and respect that human beings deserve. They were treated like uh, like trash, to be completely honest, and I'm very upset about it. Um, and I think we need to find a place for them to stay permanently, um, you know, a place that they're not going to get kicked off. And I also want to make a comment that that land that they were on was public. You know, a place that they're not going to get kicked off. And I also want to make a comment that that land that they were on was public property. So I don't understand why they couldn't be there.
Okay, thank you. Next name and address, please.
Uh, yes, Jesse Davis. Uh, Mr. Davis, if you're here, please unmute yourself this time. Uh, state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Jesse Davis, P O Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana, 46680. So I also want to touch basis on the homeless issue today and what happened. Um, unfortunately, um, three people did end up getting arrested. Although most of the officers that were there handled themselves very professionally, there was still some, um, I, I would call it disrespect to some of the citizens by, uh, certain, certain individuals and officers. And it was a show of force that was totally unnecessary. Uh, statements that were made after the fact, um, you know, some of which were false. I, I don't think should be made by our chief of police in a, in a news conference or whatever you want to call it. There were people that watched the live stream. When the code enforcement vehicles first started showing up, I approached one of the code enforcement vehicles to try to let them know that, you know, this was not going to be just a simple thing. And the guy literally took off down the alley past me with no regard to safety whatsoever and hit me with the mirror on his vehicle. I had a police officer that told me he would take a report on that. That never happened after everything was all said and done. And to treat human beings this way is just unbelievable. Mayor Pete, four years ago, we were at the same stage with the tent city under the bridge to bring awareness to this problem. And it's, it's just sad that we are right back at square one trying to make an awareness. I came into the council. I, I begged everybody I can talk to. We need to get more services here for mental health issues, number one. We need more services for addiction services. And, you know, whoever our leaders are, we need to do whatever we can do to attract those types of services here. Not more bars, not more restaurants. We need those services. That's the only way this problem's going to be solved. I know we've hammered the South Bend Council. I'm hoping that.
Thirty seconds, Jesse.
We'll go to the Mishawaka Council, the county council, and even downstate because this is a problem that everyone should help by funding every year in their budget, not just South Bend. So kudos to South Bend for what they are trying to do, but today was a disgrace for our city.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, who's next?
Carrie Clear here. Uh, please Carrie, if you could unmute yourself this time, state your name and address and proceed with your remarks. Thank you.
Hello, this is Carrie Clear from 3208 South Twickenham Drive, South Bend, Indiana. I was out there today at the location of the removal. I thank you all for the opportunity to speak. I wish to commend actually, uh, the many officers who did, many of whom did an excellent job keeping the cool heads and, and offering helpful hands in the face of angry people, uh, at Tent City. Most of the officers acted in an exemplary fashion. Both the residents and advocates were justifiably upset with the way the eviction process occurred concerning the fact that it was the general feeling that the mayor had endorsed the gathering at the location. Advocates and residents alike feel betrayed by the mayor. The police department is bearing the brunt of both the mayor's and maybe to a lesser extent, the council's ineffective leadership in addressing the problem of there being no home for the homeless. I would like to encourage the council to cease kicking the can down the proverbial smart street and get this issue addressed. It seems apparent that the mayor, the council, the assistance agencies and, uh, and faith organizations and advocacy groups are not actively communicating with one another on the subject. Please do better, council. Hold our mayor accountable. Mayor, hold the council accountable. You are elected by the people for the people and these homeless are some of the constituents that you are elected to be for. Perhaps the arrogant will fix homelessness mantra that has become a campaign cry over the last few years in South Bend that ignores the complexity of the factors that lead to homelessness and envisions homelessness fixed when those with homes don't have to look at them in time to be replaced with. We're not going to fix it, but we sure would like to be part of a team of care that spans more than politicians, government employees and grant financed care organizations to include faith leaders and advocates so that the effects of homelessness on our most vulnerable population may be lessened. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sparks, who's next?
We have Ann Manix. Uh, Ann, if you're here, please, uh, unmute yourself this time, state your name and address for the record and proceed with your remarks.
Hi, this is Ann Manix. Um, I don't think the mayor or the council wanted to do what they had to do today, but it, it was an issue that had to be dealt with. And, um, I've seen in the paper that they're interested in the Salvation Army building and I think that's a good idea. But I would like to encourage anyone connected with us to make sure that there's some services funded because you don't want to just set up this building and have it be, um, uncontrolled. So I'm very much in favor of service funding and I hope all those involved can, um, find a speedy solution to the problem. I know people are working on it. Thank you. My address is 724 West Washington, South Bend.
Ms. Manix, thank you very much.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, we've had.
There's two more?
Yes, Mr. President, um, we have Shanna Dennis. Uh, Shanna, this time if you could please unmute yourself. Uh, state your name and address for the record and proceed with your remarks. Thank you.
Hello, I am Shana Dennis of 2211 Oakwood Park Drive here in South Bend. And I had a question comment. There were three people arrested today at the encampment. I am understanding that they are being held without bail. This is, um, this is confusing to me, given what their charges are. So I would like to see or hear some action or comments on that because it seems a bit extreme, both because of what they've been arrested for and because of COVID. Like, we just, you just had a big, long discussion over petitioning the governor to release prisoners who are nonviolent because of COVID. You can't do that and then have something like this happen in your own city. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last, uh, person, Mr. Graham? Sparks, Graham Sparks?
Yes, Mr. President, we have Meg Edlund. Meg, this time if you'd please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record and proceed with your remarks. Thanks. Meg Edlund, um, are you still wishing to speak? Are you in the lobby still?
Graham, she just put a message. She's trying to figure out how to unmute.
The three dots, if you hover your, uh, cursor over all of our awesome faces, if you click it, it should unmute. Or there's a little microphone too that has a slash by it to click it. Well, it looks like in the chat said that is what I was going to say.
Okay. Unfortunately, we'll have to move on, uh.
Ramona, unfortunately, uh, Microsoft Teams app is the moderator. I'm only able to mute, I'm not able to unmute individuals. They have to do that themselves. Uh, but Meg, if you'd like to submit your remarks, uh, she can either, yeah, by email. I can, I can leave my email in the, uh, the chat box or you can email S P C D clerk.
Okay, thank you, Graham. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you and good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night, guys. Love you guys.
Thank you, Graham.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Love you, Graham.
You too, Dan.